Call the Kitty Hawk Town Council to order Monday, June the 3rd, 2013 at 6:00 PM at Kitty Hawk Town Hall. Want to welcome everybody out tonight and thank you for coming. Ask you to join in a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Motion for approval?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is presentations. Mr. Hill Coleman, CEO of the Lost Collin Runrick Island Historic Association Incorporated. Mr. Bill Coleman. I guess he's not here, so if he comes in. Okay, former police chief David Ward, presentation of longleaf pine and service weapon.
David?
Yes, sir.
We finally were able to get this after much time went by from the governor's office. But on behalf of the state of North Carolina, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of David R. Ward, I do by these presents confer the order of the longleaf pine with the rank of ambassador extraordinary privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to the members of this exalted order, among which is special privilege of a purpose of the following: North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in the free world. Signed, Pat McCory, Governor, December 31st, 2012. Also have here Chief Ward's badge that he wore, that I was presenting to him with his service weapon. And I had his, I sent his service weapon off and we all took the collection and I got him a gift that had his service weapon engraved with town seal on the top of it, on the frame, with the original, with the town seal, the town of Kitty Hawk, and Chief David R. Ward on the side of it. And this is my logo. And it was engraved here and here. And he's truly glad to have this. And I also got this award coin here with, that all of the department members, it's called a keepsake box, instead of doing a plaque from all of us saying, "Thank you, Chief, for everything you've done for us." I had this made by a company and I believe they were in South Carolina. And it says, "Chief David R. Ward, Kitty Hawk Police Department." It has the glider and the Wright Brothers engraved in the background. And it says, "Thank you for your dedication. Years of service have many memories." It has a felt inside it. Appreciate it, buddy. Thank you.
Congratulations, David. I know now that you're a civilian, you can't have a weapon in here. You know that, don't you?
I'll go ahead and leave.
What a sacrifice.
I want to thank y'all for the many years of support that I got from everybody who ever sat up there in those chairs. Those chairs are hard to sit in. It's a hard job, just like the guys that I worked with for years. It's both hard jobs. I respect what y'all did and I really appreciate it.
Thank you for serving.
It was my pleasure.
Next is Officer James Helms, promotion from PO1 to PO2 and recipient of Outstanding Officer Award for the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary.
Jimmy, I can't say enough about him. Great officer, being, we were trying to get this in in March, but he had a couple of classes that he had to attend, some training, so we've got it in here in June. I want to tell you a little bit about Jimmy and his two years. He has 24 misdemeanor drug arrests, one felony drug arrest, and arrested 48 drunk drivers in 24 months. So he excels in that area. He's also excels in other areas. He's conducted over 646 business checks in 24 months and 60 residence checks where the homes are vacant and the residents ask for us to check on them. Can't say enough about him. He's received an award along with Chad Pinnell at the Black Pelican for performing CPR. I don't know if y'all remember, he received the lifesaving award in that, in this short amount of time. And he's also been picked by his peer, by his supervisors as the Outstanding Officer of the Quarter Award from the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary. And good job, Jimmy. She's going to come up here and give you for presenting that award.
Hello. Let me start off by saying thank you for having me tonight on behalf of the OBPSA. OBPSA stands for the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary and was constructed after the end of the line of duty death of Sergeant Earl Murray with the Nag's Head Police Department, with the intent of bringing families in public safety closer together, all while hosting fundraisers and events in the memory of Sergeant Earl Murray. Some of our money raised goes to the Sergeant Earl Murray Scholarship Fund, where we give to students seeking a career in criminal justice a scholarship, and the Sergeant Earl Murray Christmas Fund, where we, along with public safety in our community, take less fortunate children shopping for Christmas, which we call Shop of Public Safety. OBPSA is always dedicating our time and energy to create positive reinforcement in the public safety community. And with that, we have launched a new program recognizing one officer in a chosen department every three months to receive the Sergeant Earl Murray Outstanding Officer Award. The officer chosen will be a deserving officer who has gone above and beyond his call of duty. All too often, the job as a police officer is thankless and a job well done is seen as another day on the streets, walk on beat. Our officers are outstanding regular men and women who put their lives on the line for the safety and protection of others. They serve with valor and distinction. They volunteer to bear the burdens of keeping our streets, neighborhoods, and families safe, leaving home every day, heading out into the unknown, knowing it could be the last time they ever walk out that door. To recognize our heroes and our living legends, we have teamed up with Outer Banks Trophies, creating a plaque to honor each deserving officer with. Tonight, I am here to present Officer James Helms with the Sergeant Earl Murray Outstanding Officer's Award. Officer Helms goes above and beyond to make sure our streets of the Kitty Hawk are safe, driving environment for all. I personally work with Officer Helms on my shift and there isn't a shift that goes by that he doesn't get a drunk driver off the streets or cite a several traffic, traffic citations. Hence the reason for his recent promotion to the position of Traffic Unit. Well deserved, might I add. Officer Helms is always polite and professional, willing to go the extra mile when responding to calls and shows dedication through his daily work. When called upon to assist in community events, he is always willing to lend a hand and help in any way he can. Being an officer means more than putting on a uniform and strapping on a gun. Officer Helms is a perfect example of a dedicated officer to the town of Kitty Hawk, one that has true love for his profession and one we are proud to present this award to. So Officer Helms, on behalf of the Outer Banks Public Safety Auxiliary, I present you with the Sergeant Earl Murray Outstanding Officer Award. Thank you.
Next is Detective Jeff Guard, 15 years service recognition.
David could probably speak better about this than me, since David was here when Jeff was hired 15 years ago. Jeff began his career after, as we all know, he's Mans Harbor native, Manay High School graduate, and graduated from the local basic law enforcement training course in Elizabeth City and began his career right here as a patrolman one. Now he's a detective. And in my 13 years of being with Jeff, very well mannered, good with the public, and as in being with a detective and now in my position, I mean, he's unbelievable as a crime scene tech. He's very methodical, very smart and witty, and definitely knows how to deal with the public. And it's truly an honor and Jeff's got 15 more to give. But thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, didn't you come over here and work some while you were still in school?
Yeah, sure did.
I thought I remember you doing it. Public comments. Do we have any public comments, Lynn?
No one has signed up.
Anybody wish to speak at public comment? Okay, consent agenda. Motion for approval of consent agenda?
Motion to approve, ask for an agreement.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is items removed from consent agenda. We don't have any of those. Next is public hearing, fiscal year 2013, '14 budget and budget ordinance. Motion go into public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just kind of summarize the budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014, give you the highlights. And then if council has any, I guess, particular questions about the proposed budget, then we can entertain those individual questions. The main elements of the 2013, 2014 budget are revenues and expenditures equals $6,721,033. We have a proposed tax rate of 30 cents per $100 of taxable property valuation. The proposed budget contains adequate funding for the operations of our administrative services, finance department, our town clerk, legal services, planning inspection, police department, fire department, public works department, sanitation, transportation, boards, and committees. The proposed budget includes a 2% pay plan adjustment for employees. It has the adequate funding for all employee benefits, which includes our health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, North Carolina retirement, 401K and 457, longevity awards, social security, work with compensation, educational benefits, retiree health insurance payments, separation allowance, and retiree life insurance payments. The, just to point out, as far as the different categories, in our personnel, overall personnel, we have a 1.5% increase over this fiscal year for next year. As far as our capital outlays for 2013, '14, it includes a $28,000 for a service truck for Public Works, $20,000 for paving Public Works parking lot. We have $37,500 for the Capital Reserve account for future replacement computers. We have $53,810 for the replacement of two police vehicles. I might mention, I went back and I talked to Chief about the replacement of his vehicles. And we had established a requirement for replacement of vehicles of 100,000 miles or 10 years in age. And it is felt that we will not be able to meet that 100,000 mile criteria. Therefore, we can remove those two vehicles from the budget. So we can make that, we can make that adjustment accordingly. We've got $17,000 for, under Fire Department, for breathing apparatus. We've got $9,000 for replacement of the jetski for our Ocean Rescue. $6,000 for portable radio for the Fire Department. And a big ticket item is $600,000 for replacement of an engine for the Fire Department. The budget will require a transfer of $332,341 from the undesignated fund balance. One other item I wanted to mention to council, and it has to do with the transfer of our fund balance. We have been, we have been doing that as a part of balancing the budget. And I gave you a little bit of a schedule that we have done from 2011, '12 up to the next fiscal year, 2014, '15. And as you can see, 2011, 2012, we had budgeted $510,426 with an undesignated fund balance of $762,546. And then 2012, '13, we had a transfer of $294,651 and an undesignated fund balance of $602,699. And then this fiscal year, a budget amount of transfer of $332,341 and undesignated fund balance of $596,526. Looking, looking ahead a little bit, I just want to bring this up that, as you see, the undesignated fund balance is, is going down. We have been able to maintain appreciable amount for the transfer. However, if we do incur another year of having to make a transfer in '14, '15, say, I'm just using a figure of $300,000, I'm not saying that that's the amount. But if we did and we did not have, utilized the undesignated fund balance fully, then we would actually come up with a shortfall of $264,185. So just to make council aware of that particular situation. So I think we need to be careful about that in the future. And that's just a brief overall summary of the budget. Any particular questions?
Do I have any questions?
I just want to point out one thing. On this undesignated fund balance, that does not reflect the $3.5 million that we have set aside in a run for running the town in an emergency.
That's right.
So that is excess money.
Yes.
And in an ideal world, where government knew exactly what they needed and how much they could spend, a zero balance on that particular thing wouldn't be a bad thing. So, just so everybody understands, that's not eating into money that would be needed to operate the town, at least not yet. Maybe in 2014, '15, that becomes an issue that needs to be looked at for that reason.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just have one question, and that is, are we going to ask for the capital expenditures to come to council the way we have in the past, prior to spending the money, to see how the...
I would think so. When we approve the budget, I would think we would
Okay.
make that a part of it.
I agree. Yes.
Anybody have anything else? Anything else? Okay, we're in the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir. No one signed up.
Does anyone wish to speak at this public hearing for the budget? The record show that no one came forward and motion go back into regular session.
So move. One second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, what does council desire to do for the budget? Do you want to...
I'd be, I'd be interested in deferring the vote on the budget to a time when we have, we understand exactly all of the money that is coming in and if there are any budget amendments that are needed later, to just see what our, what our position is at that time and go ahead and, and vote on the budget at that time. It's certainly not contro, you know, not, not dealing with controversies since no one really has come forward to, to speak.
I agree.
I think we're going to have some budget changes for this year. I'm not sure what. And I've talked to Charlene about it. It depends on, we don't know for sure what, what might have to be brought up in this particular budget that we might have to change. So we may have to have a meeting whether we do the budget or not.
But right now, there's, we don't know that. We don't know that we're going to have to have another meeting, Charlene.
You want to come up, Charlene, and explain where we are?
Yes, there will be several budget amendments that will be coming forward. One specifically will be the, the project that we're working on with Dare County for the communications equipment for this room and some other potential budget amendments, especially the, the state disaster funds for this year that have just come in. So that budget amendment will come before the board also.
Okay, so this is a meeting that we do have to have prior to the 30th of June. Is that, is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if we're going to have a meeting, I would kind of like to see all of those things come in and...
Okay, before you leave, how late in the year, in June, do you think we need to do this? You don't have...
Within the next few weeks. I mean, we're on the 3rd of June now, so I would say within the next few weeks. Whatever is, works for your schedules and another meeting.
The budget amendments that you were describing won't necessarily change the 30 cent evaluation rate, will it?
No, sir.
I mean, those, those are just housekeeping type budget items.
That is correct. They won't, Dare County will not have a total final figure until June 30th. But the, the figures that we have going forward are pretty, you know, I feel comfortable with those, absolutely. And Dare County...
If we did the budget tonight, we wouldn't hurt anything. We'd still have to come back and pass these amendments because they're housekeeping items. You don't foresee anything that would make us change right this minute the rate that's been proposed? The 30 cent rate?
Not in relation to the land values, not in relation to the land values, the tax levy.
That's what I thought. All right. Y'all do what you want. I just wanted to make sure we were clear that we're not really changing rates.
Right.
No.
And we've advertised the rate. And I can tell you, unless something drastic happens, once we close this tonight, or whatever we do, I'm not, just like last year.
Not going to change...
We want to raise the rate after we've had the public hearing.
Not going to change after...
So I'll tell you that upfront.
Okay. The only question in this whole thing is, Richard's not going to be here the last week. Emily's got some commitments. You don't know when...
It starts on, it's jury duty starts on June 18th and it's, it's not, it's not Dare County, so I have to go to Elizabeth City for federal jury duty.
So that's...
Maybe we better do this and... I'll make the motion, let it go down in flames if you want.
You can make the motion and we'll talk about it. It's fine.
All right. I move for the approval of the budget documents presented by the town manager and authorize the mayor to sign said document and the town clerk to attest.
Second. Okay, and then you got, you're talking about the budget now, right?
Correct.
This piece right here.
Okay. Okay, any comments? Discussion?
Yeah, we kind of talked about this last time. And of course, you know, you guys, I really appreciate all your conservative approaches to what we're doing. I still feel, and I know I'm on the single hot seat about it, but I still feel that the shared revenue is going to be an issue for us this year and it's going to be an issue in the future. That we need to add the extra 2 cent in because of the fact that we're going to see shortfalls coming up in the future. Now, I'm not going to vote against this budget, but I want you to understand my position and how I feel. I would much rather go for, with an extra 2 cent than to go with a 30 cent as we are now.
Well, I made the last workshop, I made the same comments and tried to make it clear that the problem's coming down the road in the future, not necessarily in this, this year, but in the future. It's going to come back to get us. And, but I will vote for, for this budget to be, if that's what council decides to do. But I wanted to point out that the problem's coming down the road by maintaining the 30 cent, but that's my comment.
And the fund balance issue doesn't kick in until next budget year, correct?
That's correct.
I say we vote. You know, I, I'm ready to vote if it's not, if it's not going to.
Does you? I, I have no comment. Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Well, wait a minute. The only comment I will make in addressing both your concerns is you may well be right. This shared revenue roulette that everybody is playing is at some point going to hurt, especially as more towns get into municipal districts and then start taxing the way Nag's Head did and those sort of things. But those are unknowns at this point. What is known, what is known is that we have a revenue neutral that's going to affect people in different ways this year. That's an unknown. What is known is that insurance rates are going up and other factors that are hitting people at a bad time this year. If it was, if it was routine this year, I'd probably agree with you. But it's not this year. Next year, all of that will be fleshed out. The legislature's wheeling and dealing and whatever they're going to come up with, and we don't know, because they're talking about doing things with sales, tax, revenues, and other things. Let's let this year settle down. The 30 cents represents the growth rate that ordinarily, we probably wouldn't even consider it. So you've already got some built into it, as far as growth rate. So we're not, you know, we're not going backwards. We're still going ahead. Let's give it, let's give the people a breathing room this year and the next year. Deal with what comes. That's all we, all you can do.
The revenue neutral is going to hurt some people bad and some people may make out and some people may break even from last year. So we don't know that and we can't help that.
Ain't nobody going to make out because the county went up, but that's...
But I mean, we can't help that because it's, it's a matter of the reevaluation. So, you know, that's what you're getting at.
The thing that everybody needs to understand, and I've said this before, is the, the, these past councils and so forth, and this council's always been very, very thrifty with their money. And because we have been thrifty, we're being penalized by the way the system works. That's it.
But that's happened to us every year.
Every, every, every year.
Can't change it.
I understand where you're coming from and I agree with you, but I also agree with Gary. I think, you know, we've got so many things going to be hitting us this year.
Yeah, I agree.
And insurance scares the hell out of me. The tornadoes in Oklahoma and all that stuff. I mean, our insurance rates are going to go crazy again. I'm sure of it.
Yeah, I know. Wind inhale, insurance and...
Yeah.
And the flood, and the flood insurance law, that's, that's a big thing.
That's a whole new ballgame.
I talked to, when me and Gary talked this morning, there was an article that The Voice did, Ray Sturridge, that made a comment back in 2004, 2005, as mayor. And their, the Kill Devil Hills Council made a statement that the fact that they needed to go up to match other towns so they would get their share. And the finance director did a comparison of how much money they would have lost by doing this, so.
All right, now I have a question. I'm sorry, you're not finished.
I am. Go ahead.
I have a question for the manager because we have two different things in front of us.
Right, you've got a budget and a budget ordinance.
We've got a draft budget and then we have the budget ordinance. Yeah, we got a draft budget, and then we have the budget ordinance.
Yes.
We're gonna do these separate? Is that the best way to do that?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, we wanna vote on the one first.
Okay. On the motion we have, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right. Next, as part of the draft budget, I have included a budget ordinance that's required by Section 159-13 of the North Carolina General Statutes. And there again, the budget ordinance provides for revenue of $6,721,033 based on the collection rate of 98.93% by Dare County Tax Department. Budget ordinance also includes the expenditure of all town functions in the amount of $6, 721,033, which reflects a balanced budget as presented.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Have a motion?
I move approval of the budget ordinance in accordance with Section 159-13 of the North Carolina General Statute and further move that the tax rate of 30 cents for $100 of property valuation be approved. I further authorize the mayor to sign the town clerk to attest said ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You have another one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As a part of the overall approval, which you approved the budget ordinance, we also have the budget document, which I'd like to get council's approval on, which includes town council goals, work objectives, and financial policies for fiscal year 2013, 14, the board and committee work plans, the town of Kitty Hawk position classification plan and salary scale for FY 2013, 2014, and the schedule of fees for fiscal year 2013, 14.
Okay. Somebody make a motion?
Yeah. They got out of order is what happened.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so...
Is this the one we want? The budget documents? Okay. I move for approval of the budget documents presented by the town manager and authorize the mayor to sign said documents and the town clerk to attest.
Second. Man, you're gonna have to straighten your...
Yeah.
They were reversed in the package, and that's what messed me up.
Okay, any comments? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Got a budget. Now, one thing that does, that saves in case we set a time when Emily can't be here and when Richard can't be here, the only thing we'll be dealing with is the amendments to this year's budget.
Correct.
So, we can make that later in the month and not affect anything if that's okay with...
And you would have a quorum, you know?
Well, we gotta have three, you know, if it's a minor... Y'all understand that if...
Yeah.
So, you can do it the last week, I think, then, if you want, to make sure you got...
Yeah.
And you might be here anyway the following week, and you would be going.
I'll be going, yeah.
That solves the problem of all everybody not being here for the budget. That's the only thing I...
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have two requests for public hearings to be set. Richard, you got them?
Yeah, I would move we call for a public hearing for zoning amendment, an application to rezone a portion of the property of 108 Sigurn Drive from Beach Residential 2 to Beach Commercial 1. Public hearing would be set, advertised and set for the July 1st, 2013 Town Council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I would move the town council set a public hearing for a zoning amendment, an application to rezone the property at 926 West Kitty Hawk Road from Village Residential 1 to Village Commercial 2. Public hearing would be set, advertised and set for July 1, 2013 Town Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is new business. Amendment to the town code, vehicles, traffic, no parking signs.
Mayor, our present ordinance, Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, stopping, standing, or parking stipulates that the north side of East Kitty Hawk Road is a no parking zone. Because of the demand on parking for Hurricane Mo's and the beach, the no parking zone has been unofficially modified. However, the parking on the north side of East Kitty Hawk Road has created a sight distance problem for adjoining property owner in order to allow the posting of no parking on East Kitty Hawk Road to allow for a better sight distance and to allow for some parking for persons using the beach. It's requested that an amendment, existing ordinance be made to satisfy this need. I know that the mayor and I had talked about the proposed amendment and the wording. Either council can go along with the, except for designated parking areas as posted, or I might suggest that maybe something in order of, unless otherwise posted, to clarify any confusion that that might present to you.
Would it work if it was just as posted? Kitty Hawk Road from Crowtown Highway to NC 12 as posted?
That could be... That's fine.
Would that work?
Yes.
So, that if there are no parking signs in the designated... That assumes that there's parking allowed on the other end, even though in the code the lead-in sentence says the following areas are designated no parking zones?
Correct. John and I talked about that, and one of the things we were trying to find out was what signs does DOT have available that we can use? What's the wording on? And we weren't sure about, you know, what their signs read. And we don't know if they have signs that you can park between these signs, or you can go parking from here to the corner, however you're gonna do it. We're gonna be stuck with what their signs say. So, I guess just as posted will work, and we'll work with their signs to designate those sections.
The police is not postage and park.
That's right.
So, that just narrows it for that particular subparaphrase in the code that, in this case, it's just as posted, not the whole north side?
That's correct.
Okay. As long as it works for the lawyers and the police, the police and the lawyers in that order, then I'm good with it.
Man, you understand this change? Okay, Emily, you ready to make a motion?
Let me bring up something related to this. It has nothing to do with this particular proposal, but I was stopped in Walmart, and I received, I guess it's kind of a complaint, and Chief Johnson, maybe you can answer this for me. The complaint was that the large rental homes on the beach are using the public parking, overnight parking, in those slots and therefore not making them available to the general public because the rental agents are taking them. What do you know about that?
The ones at Birch Lane and Lilian Street, and I'm not sure, they're all posted with no parking between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, and we do enforce that.
Okay.
So, those would be covered as far as along the sides. It's under the right-of-way rule, which they have. We have to tag it.
Twenty-four.
It's 48 hours they have to remove it for those. So, we don't see a problem with it, and I wasn't too long ago on the street, and we don't see an overflow issue with that. And if there's a specific incident, then they should call us, but usually those are all vacant. And a lot of times what we'll see, the officers will see, if they see that, they think someone's out on the beach, and we usually investigate that.
Okay, so, it's a non-problem.
No, sir.
Except for the person that brought it up to me. Okay, that's all we know. Thank you.
Okay, now, did you make a motion, Emily?
I haven't, but I shall. I move approval of the proposed amendment to Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic as amended, Article 3, stopping, standing, or parking. Further authorize the mayor to sign the town clerk to attest to said amendment.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is appointments... Appointments to town boards and committees. First is the planning board, I guess.
You want me to do that?
If you want. Yeah.
Well, I'll do that. Someone else can do the others. All right, and I'll do these separately, and there's a reason I'm doing them separately. I make a motion to nominate Craig Garris to regular planning board for two-year term expiring on June 2015.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Next, I make a motion to nominate Jeff Pruitt to a regular planning board for two-year term expiring June 2015.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next, I'm going to make a motion for a different person in the planning board, and I need to explain what's going on here just a little bit. Don Stallman has been in the planning board in that position now for 11 years, and he's done a good job. He's been true to the planning board. We have some people that have volunteered all the way back from 2009 to sit on the planning board, and it might be time to move some people up so that we can get some training for them and allow more people out there with the knowledge to be good planning board members. So, I'm going to make a motion to nominate Lynn McLean to the regular planning board for a two-year term expiring June 2015.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, that's going to leave at the moment Lynn McLean's alternate open, and the reason is there is one person that has agreed to do that, but they need to make sure they don't have a conflict of interest. So, I'd like to leave that open for tonight and come back to it. So, the alternate spot where Lynn is being moved will remain open as of tonight.
Okay.
All right. Anybody have a problem with that? Any other nominations? All right. Now, we need the chair and vice chair, and I'll make a motion for both of those at the same time. Motion to nominate Oscar Northern to the planning board chair and Craig Garris to the planning board vice chair for one-year terms to expire June 2014.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Man, is it... Is that okay?
That's loaded.
Okay, great.
Do we vote on everything, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. Recreation committee, we have a vacancy, and we don't have somebody for that right now, is that...
Yeah, we have no volunteers. So, we're just gonna leave that vacant. They have a meeting in July, which they have to have, and they'll have a quorum, and we'll try to find somebody for the July meeting.
And next is the board of adjustments.
I got a question for Linda. Gary Muir ever call back? You know, I know him, and I'm probably gonna see him in the next 10 days. Would you like me to contact him?
Contact him and let him know.
Okay.
If y'all are appointing before him, then he's been appointed, not do you want to be appointed.
Okay.
We can appoint him if you don't want to.
Oh. Okay. All right. I wanna do all mine at one time.
You weren't here, so you got nominated.
That's all.
Dave, if I could provide just a moment, I actually spoke with Mr. Muir today to arrange a board of adjustment meeting. We have a variance application, and the board's gonna be meeting on the 9th of July. He did certainly express that he would be attending that meeting, and if that's the case, I think we could make an assumption that he's still willing to serve on the board at the pleasure of the council.
Okay.
I'm under that circumstance.
Man, y'all need to communicate a little bit.
Okay, I make a motion and I nominate Earl Taylor and Barbara Connery and alternate Gary Muir to fill three-year terms ending 6/16.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I also nominate, we gotta have a chairman for this committee, and I nominate Matt Spencer to be chairman of the board of adjustments. I think he's attorney, and I think he'll do a great job there. Earl's done a terrific job on there, and we still need him on the board, but I think with some of the things coming up and so forth, maybe Matt would do a good job for us.
Some of the things coming up, need an attorney.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, I agree. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, is that all of them, Lynn?
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
We don't have to...
Barbara, we remain... Oh, oh, you need to nominate Barbara for vice chair.
I don't think... Do we, Lynn? We don't have to. Unless you're gonna change, right? Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Reports and general comments from the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, first item, I just wanted to kind of bring counsel up to date on the beach management concept assessment that Coastal Planning and Engineering is doing. They informed me that they're making good progress with report. They have a solid draft in development, and the report is under review within their organization. They might be able to send a working draft prior to June 19th, and so we can take a look at that. Also, on June 19th, we'll be meeting in Little Washington for the purpose of working with Kill Devil Hills and Duck to see if we can combine our efforts in the early stages of beach nourishment. So, we'll be doing that this month.
Did you ever get any information where we got permission to put sand on the beach in this area? If that would qualify for beach nourishment? Is that a different... Maybe attorney needs to look in there. I don't know. We got permission to put sand from FEMA on the beach when it washed away, and which storm was that in?
Isabel.
Isabel.
Isabel. And we had to get easements to put that on the beach. Now, I wonder if that would... Those easements would qualify for beach nourishment, or if we have to go back and get more new ones?
Did we get easements just for that limited purpose?
I don't know. I don't know. But it may be something we'd ask you to look into, wouldn't you think?
I've already asked the question.
You get an answer?
I did at the... When John and I were down at Kill Devil Hills the first time.
Okay.
Of the ocean engineer. And basically, the answer seems to be that that was a construction permit different from a beach nourishment permit. A beach nourishment is kinda in perpetuity, and this was not.
Okay.
So, and I said this before, we're still going to need beach nourishment easements if any nourishment's done north of historic. The town has from the county and the federal project south of it. Right. So, I mean, he can look into it, but I'm pretty sure all the answers... So, I mean, he can look into it, but I'm pretty sure all the answers seem to be that those wouldn't work.
Were different.
That was.
It was for the FEMA berm, I think specifically.
Correct, and it was an construction permit, not.
And there were a couple, a couple of properties that, I think two.
Two, I think.
That did not grant these.
That's correct.
And they left it vacant at the front of those properties.
Well, that may be the answer.
That, that sounds like that's probably what the answer is.
Yeah.
If it had been a permanent easement, that would have been a different.
Yeah.
Thing altogether.
Yeah.
I didn't know, so I just thought of this.
Okay.
Okay, John?
All right. Also, I wanted to bring counsel up to date on the ocean outfall analysis that Almar Associates is doing for us. Mayor and myself and Mayor Pretend Perry met with John DeLucia and George Wood of Environmental Professionals to discuss the location of possible concepts of outfalls on the ocean side. Mr. DeLucia presented four possible locations along possible cost estimates. This information is not final, but the input will be used for final document, and it was suggested that further consideration be given to the concept before moving forward. I didn't know if you all have any additional comments in that regard or not. So we will be, he's, he is finalizing the report for us on that. I also wanted to mention that on the crossovers, as you, I'm sure probably well know, but the East Lilian Street Beach Crossover has been completed, inspected by the town and granted a certificate of compliance last Friday. East Kitty Hawk Road Beach Crossover is substantially complete, and, but a minor adjustment will be, a need to be made to derailing, and I believe that had, that has been resolved. The adjustment, I believe Joe mentioned to me today, that the railing compliance has been taken care of. The temporary certificate of compliance was issued on Friday, and I believe they are in a position to go ahead and issue the certificate of compliance for that East Kitty Hawk Road crossover. One other thing I need to bring before counsel is we received a final billing from LSI Marine Construction, and the final cost of the construction of the East Kitty Hawk Road crossover exceeded the original contract amount by $2,675. The additional cost was due to the removal of concrete that was at the location of the pilings and was not known at the time of the bid. So I would ask the counsel give approval for the revised contract amount of $13,875 for the East Kitty Hawk Road crossover with LSI Marine Construction.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I'm, I move to approve the amended contract amount for East Kitty Hawk Road crossover with LSI Marine Construction for $13,875.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right. Another thing, I just want to mention that, let counsel know that Kitty Hawk had the highest participation of all the towns in the Outer Banks for the recent Cupcake 5K that was held to the benefit, for the benefit of Relay for Life. We had 33% of our employees, and we had one council member was participated in the 5K. So I just wanted to comment that we had a very good turnout, and I think everybody had a really enjoyable time.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir. We received some information from Tom Wheeler, he's the owner of the Shoreside Center Walmart Properties. Relative to Walmart's proposal to limit traffic on Cypress Knee Trail during August of this year for the purpose of reconstructing the roadway, I had a call from Councilman Bateman had asked that we bring this up before counsel for discussion as it can affect the traffic in and out of Barrier Island Station. So I don't know, since that is a private roadway, if there's anything the town can do, but I think we might be able to talk to the contractor and see if there's, can try to accommodate the traffic as best as possible.
I don't think it's a private road, Dave's Road. Think it's a public road.
It is? Okay, well.
That was the intent, and there was some controversy about it, but.
The whole, the whole road that enters.
Well.
I'm not sure. My recollection was it wasn't necessarily public, but that the Barrier Island, I think, owns or has part ownership of that piece runs out.
Remember the attorney made him remove the bumps, the, in the road?
They sure did.
That's right, that's right.
He made him remove them, and he maintained that that was a public road. And there was some reason for him wanting to do that about series treatment and stuff if it could be put in, if, if it was a private road. There was some discussion about that. I don't know the final outcome, but I know he maintained that it was a public road and made the speed bump come out.
Near, I remember that.
So I.
I have a simple question. Are they going to block access to Barrier Island?
Well, that, I, that's the impression that I got, that they would be obstructing the flow of traffic there to Barrier Island, yes.
With no alternate?
When, when the owner called me, and Ralph Calphi also, they're gonna take the road completely up and redo the bid and replace the road in the exact same place it is right now. Correct, Joe?
That's correct.
Okay. And they're gonna do it in the middle of August. The owner's problem is the fact that they have people checking in, checking out, that's a busy time of the year. They think it's gonna pose a safety hazard, not only for them, their people, but also it's a inconvenience for their business. Didn't we get some response back from the police chief, as well as the fire department and maybe DOT on whether they thought this was gonna be backing up into the road and so forth?
Yeah, that they thought that perhaps it might create a problem in backup traffic on 158.
Because if people don't know what the alternate means of getting in, you know, that, that certainly is gonna be a problem on a Saturday. But can't they, if they know to go around through the back entrance, can't they get there via Echner?
Well, the back entrance has got a.
It's got a, it's got a gate, but it's up to them to lift it up.
You've got a, yeah, you've got to have, have the code to get through.
Yeah.
Somebody checking in won't have the code.
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me like the first answer, or first question to answer, is it a public road or a private road?
I know it's designated.
I think we're out of the.
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding, but we check on, double-check on that to make sure.
It's at least, it's at le, you know, the Barrier Island at least has, has an easement through there. I mean, they have, that became an issue when it, when it was built.
Yeah.
Is there some reason this has to be done in August? Is that, did I hear that?
Supposedly, what Ralph Calphi told me, their contract, they want to be done with the project, and so they want it to be done when they're done. And they want to pack it up, get everybody out of there, and get their contract gone. I think that in the conversation with the owner, they said that alternative would be to put the project off till later, after the season ends, or that really, really don't need to have the project done anyway, as far as the road replaces, nothing wrong with the road. It's just in the contract to have it done.
That's what I was wondering, I didn't see anything wrong with the road.
They would, they also said that if we could give some kind of letter to Walmart saying that, you know, now's not the time to do it, especially in August, for safety reasons and so forth.
I think off-season would be better, if they have to do it, you know?
I can't, well, if you got a public road out here, and you redoing it, you still leave access. I don't know.
I agree.
It would have to provide another access, seems to me, while, you know, alongside that road to, in order to do it.
One lane at a time or something.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't.
It doesn't make sense to me, but it's Walmart, too, and you know how they do things as they want to do.
I think we need more information to.
We'll certainly look into that and see what we can find out. One other thing, I also, we received a compliment from Dick and Carol in Dewrigger of 3518 Bay Drive. Mr. and Mrs. Dewrigger were recently involved in a traffic accident on the Wright Memorial Bridge, and one of our police officers, Patrolman Daniel Helm, provided assistance to the Dewruggers. As a result of them hitting the bridge with their vehicle, the Dewruggers had a flat tire, and they were escorted by Patrolman Helms until they could no longer drive on their flat tire, and they waited until the state police arrived to handle the situation. So they wanted to pass that along to the fire, the police department and council.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks. Okay. Reports, general comments from the town attorney?
Don't have anything for you.
Okay, reports and general comments from the town council, Richard?
I have nothing, thank you.
Irving?
Last, well, last time we had a meeting, anyway, my mouth spoke before my brain engaged, and I made a comment about us, some individuals having their heads in the sand. It was unprofessional. I didn't mean it personally. What I did, sometimes frustration overtakes me, and it did, so I apologize.
Okay, that sounds good. Emily? You still got your head in the sand?
Didn't bother me.
Listen, I went, I went home. Let me tell you how this came about, y'all. I went home, I went home, Theresa, how was the meeting? I said, I told them they had their heads in the sand. She said, what? She said, no, you didn't. I went, yeah, I did. I said, once again, the mouth was going off. She said, you big dummy.
You always got your feet in the sand, I don't know about you.
There have been a whole lot worse things said to me in my lifetime.
You got anything? Yuri?
The only thing I'll do is add just a little bit of comment on the outfall situation. The reason we're looking into that is because a question was asked of our new governor. Could they ease up on the rules on that a little bit and make it possible to put outfalls in where they needed? And the governor did respond in a positive way with his secretary of water quality and things of that nature. They even came down here, they were very responsive. So we've got a lot of things we're looking at. Unfortunately, like beach nourishment, it all costs a lot of money, and it's very difficult to, to put it all together, but we're looking at the process, the concepts, and the alternatives, and we'll present it to the people, and they can pay for what they want. That's what it boils down to. That's all I got.
Because we got three projects that we're looking at, is outfalls, pumping stations, and beach nourishment.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And they all affect the same area, but, you know, how to do that, like you say.
How to do any of them, that's correct.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Public comment? We have any public comment? No public comment? Okay. Now, do we want to recess for budget amendments or wait and advertise for budget amendments when we find out when we can have them all done?
If we don't set a date now, I believe Lynn has to have, what, seven days to advertise for the meeting? That recommend.
Not seven days, do you?
Will, can we look at a calendar and see what day?
Well, we don't know, see, that's the thing.
Well, we've got a budget, so let's just save the last week of June and set it up in the last week of June.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause, you know.
And we'll recess till then.
Recession to the last week of June, which is.
Do we have a calendar?
Well, here we go.
Well, 24th is a Monday. June 24th is a Monday.
All right, that's good for me.
Monday's good for me, too.
Okay.
And if Ian is not doing a big old federal patch case or something.
I don't know what the jury thing is gonna be doing to him.
Okay.
Okay, go for the 24th, Charlene, that sound good?
All right, motion to adjourn.
Recession.
Recession.
I'm sorry, recess? Yeah, I had blanked out recess. Okay. Motion to recess until June 24th of 2013.
Second.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
You're gonna do that as an evening meeting, or don't we usually do them in the morning? If it's nothing significant?
You could, yeah, you could.
What do you want?
What do you want, morning or evening?
Morning.
Okay, nine o'clock, yeah.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
All right, 9:00 AM.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Got it.
24 June, 2013, 9:00 AM. Who second that?
I did.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That does that.